Welcome everyone to the February 28th Goffstown Board of Selectment meeting. If we'd all rise for the pledge. Steve, would you lead us, please? All right, we're going to go out of order on a couple of our items. So we're gonna go to the tax assessors here, Scott Bartlett, to talk about poll license petitions. And Scott, thank you for coming down. I know you didn't feel well and that's why we're going out of order to try to get you back home.
Thank you very much.
Nurse your cold.
All right, the letter that I had given to the board is basically requesting that the board have a public, hold a public hearing to change the verbiage that's on the, our poll license agreements. Basically, the, on the letter, the text that's in italic, that's the language that I would like to add to all of our, all of our poll licenses. And essentially what happens now is we get a poll license from the electric company or from the telephone company, they supply it.
Right.
We, you sign it and then it's sent back. So what I was gonna suggest, if you approve this at the public meeting, is that we just have a stamp made up with this so that when you go to approve the poll licenses, you just stamp this on. Again, if you approve it. You'd have to have a, hold a public hearing. We, the list also gave, or the letter also gave a list of people that are currently using the public right-of-way. So all of these are taxable, but I tried to establish a list first of everybody that's, that is using the public right-of-way. And we'd set up a hearing, let everybody obviously comment on it. The purpose of this is to allow for taxation of the use of the public right-of-way. In 1999, the city of Rochester started trying to tax Verizon for their use of the public right-of-way. And they did what we're doing right here. They changed the poll license agreements, they sent them a tax bill. There's been three Supreme Court decisions for Verizon. They're now called Verizon One, Verizon Two, and Verizon Three. And I'm just gonna read something. This is from Verizon Two. And it says, "Returning to the plain language of RSA 7223 Roman numer one B, it is clear that when a city's land is used or occupied by someone other than the city, the lease or agreement between the city and the user or occupier must include a provision requiring the user or occupier to pay real estate taxes." Okay, right now, our licenses don't do that. They are an agreement. They're not a, they're not a rent, but they are an agreement between the public utilities and the town for them to use that land. And going to the last sentence of this, of this particular paragraph, it says, "We thus conclude that the legislature intended for this type of ownership," referring to the public right-of-way, "to be sufficient to allow the city to impose real estate taxes on a user or occupier of the public ways." That's basically what I'm doing. We do, we would need to get this in place as of April 1st. I don't think we have to actually hold the hearing April 1st, but it would be retroactive as of April 1st, 2011. I did wanna come in today because that would give us time, you know, we held it like the 28th. That would give us time to get out notices and, you know, still give them sufficient notice of the hearing.
All right, any questions for Scott?
I'll, go ahead, go first.
Thank you. How do you determine the extent of all the infrastructure on our right-of-ways?
Well, right now, I have a, a pretty good inventory of public services in New Hampshire. I don't have anything on Verizon. And my first step, once, if this is approved, my first step would be to send out a request for information from them. This is not taxing their infrastructure. This particular step here-
Well, I, I'm using that as whatever it is installed, whether it's overhead or buried.
Right, right.
But step one is to just amend the poll licenses. That's what this is all about right now.
Yep. So right now, I'm, what I'm doing is I'm looking at my, my public service information. I have a value on the polls that are located in Goffstown. I have a value on the conduit that's located in Goffstown. I've also gone through all the poll licenses that they have in the town's clerk's office to try to determine how many of the polls are jointly owned, how many are solely owned by the electric company, and how many are solely owned. So I do have some pretty basic information to start with. I also have GIS information where Neil has taken the GIS and he, he's able to count the number of polls that we have in the town. So I, that's another-
Is this, this, I'm sorry, Steve. Is it, can I just ask one? Does this generate like funds or something? Is that, was that what the-
It would be an assessment.
Assessment.
On the lake.
And is there a projection as to what type of assessment would be-
Well, right now, I'm, I'd rather not quote a number-
Okay.
Because I'm looking at a lot of different approaches. There are a lot of different ways to look at this, and this is fairly new in our, our industry. Not a lot of towns have done this. There's only a handful that are currently assessing-
Okay.
-the public right-of-way. I've spent a lot of time speaking with other assessors and some of their techniques that they've used. I did do this in Seabrook, so I have done this before.
Right.
In Seabrook, I had a total value of the public right-of-way of somewhere around two and a half million dollars. And then I divvied that up between the users of the right-of-way.
I'm sorry, Steve.
I guess a few questions. How many communities are actually doing this, this way at this point? I mean, if you had an idea, I mean, is this something new? How does this-
Well, it is new. It's, it started with the city of Rochester, and Rochester was the first one to do it, 1999. Since then, there's probably a dozen, maybe 20. There are more that are starting to do it now. And part of the reason that, that towns didn't jump on the bandwagon is because there was an ongoing litigation with us. So there was three different Supreme Court decisions on it.
So it's been settled?
Um, well, somewhat.
Okay, I'm just curious, okay.
No, I'm not. Question regarding that then. When these companies set rates, et cetera, honestly, we talked public service, I imagine that rate could set, they set that statewide, correct? And so in that regards, one might say there won't be a cost transfer for those citizens of Goffstown because they wouldn't be able to adjust the, the rate for, per, we say, for just the town of Goffstown. Is that fair? Mm-hmm, all right. If we were to go, and now I imagine like Verizon, the cable company who utilizes space on their polls, would that make an adjustment with, I mean, in other words, would there be a cost transfer of this down the road?
Tough to say. I mean, it, it really is. And I, I understand your point. The thing is, when I look at this, and that may be a valid point that you decide you don't want to go forward with this, but the way I'm looking at this is the Supreme Court has told us that we shall tax it. And, you know, I'll give you copies of the, the decisions so you can look at them. And I, there is, there is a transfer. And right now, we are taxing PS&amp;H. We tax all their equipment. We attach, we tax their polls, we tax their lines, and because of that-
And substations.
Everything, absolutely everything.
Fairpoint is the one that owns some polls and does not pay taxes on it.
Right, right. So right now, we are, there is a cost transfer through PS&amp;H because all those costs are part of the rate base and they get transferred right back to the rate payer.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, this has been a subject of discussion at the MAC for quite a while. And as you, you pointed out, those were the issues. And the last meeting I was at, in the discussion, we might get ahold of Susan Olson, who might be able to help in some of that inventory as valuation from Verizon because that was a subject that came up of, of that. So that would be a resource.
And, and we went into more detail in the municipal managers' meeting.
Right.
We had a panel discussion on it with members of other assessors, DRA, and a consultant. And I gave that material to Scott.
And this go, this goes, just so the boards are aware, when you're talking about the Rochester case, this goes back to the consultant that Rochester hired back then in 1999.
Right.
And that went through around in a few other towns and communities, did sign on with them financially. They helped. And I can't remember the, the fellow's name, but he did, he was that consultant. He came up with a lot of information-
San Soucy?
Yeah, Soucy.
George San Soucy.
Right, San Soucy, correct. He's the one who, who did that. And that was used as a model in a lot of these other communities.
I have a copy of that model. I've seen that before as well.
And Steve, to answer your question, the exemption for taxing on the polls expired this year. But there has been a new bill introduced, and instead of going to municipal affairs, it went to Ways and Means. So there's a new bill to continue, make it a permanent exemption. So we're waiting to see.
Right. It's not, technically, it's not a new tax. They've had an exemption.
Right.
And when you do the comparisons in the other states, what the expenses are in comparison to everything, they're charging the same rates, but they just don't have the tax that they have here in New Hampshire. But in comparison to the other states, where they do have it, the, the rates are the same.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? All right, that being said, we will proceed with scheduling a public hearing on that. And Scott, you can just work with Sue and, and iron out the, the appropriate date.
I will.
Is that fair?
Yep, thank you very much.
We hope you feel better, and, and thanks for coming in. I know that you were feeling well. We're gonna, we have a 6:20 presentation, so is there any, it's beyond 6:10, but is there anybody from the public that would like to comment? Not seeing anyone, okay. We'll then close the public comment. Next is the acceptance with or without corrections of the February 9th meeting minutes. And with that, I'll take a motion to accept.
Scott, can we hold off on it since we're missing a member?
If that's what you wanna do.
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter to me. I mean, there's always some person-
Nick usually, Nick Fury weighs in on both sides. I would say it would be wise to wait.
Then we will wait. Yeah, and Selectman Capasino was out this week. He's out of town. All right, so we're going to, to a couple of quick ones, because I think there's people that are coming in, Sue. That's why I wanna kinda hold true to the, to the 6:00, 6:20. So with that, let's just, well, I have the public here. Rich, yes, chief.
I have a quick one that wasn't on the agenda, but I-
Come on up, yeah. This is all you came for?
Mm-hmm.
So you're looking to get home early. That's good. I thought we'd have known.
On a mission.
I thought, I thought we had non-public with you, no?
No, that's canceled. Selectman Capasino requested it be canceled.
Uh-huh, okay, all right.
Good evening. As, as we know, this year, we're planning on replacing an ambulance. It was in the, the budget for the EMS, EMS budget. The last ambulance we purchased was a 2000, 2009 GM medium-duty chassis ambulance. That ambulance has been performing quite well for us, and we actually were able to find a sister truck to it, to, to dealer demo on Indiana. And we happened to just stumble on this, this vehicle. And I would like to get permission by the board tonight to explore that further. What'll happen is the dealer for this particular ambulance will be sending that, this, this truck to Massachusetts or they'll actually come up here and show us the truck to see if we're, we're interested in to follow through on it. The price of this truck is $172,000. We would have to paint it because it's vanilla white at this point. But the, the paint, with the paint and the price of the vehicle is, is, is a cost savings to what we initially thought would be $190,000. So there's a potential cost savings in purchasing this truck, and the truck only has just over 2,000 miles on it right now. So I think it's a, something that we, we should probably explore. Looking at also the trade-in value of, of the, of the current ambulance that, that's due to be traded out, and it's about $10,000. So we'll have to consider whether we wanna keep that as a third ambulance or, or go ahead and outright, outright and trade it. But again, I wouldn't even like go that far yet until we figure out if this is the ambulance that we'd like to have.
Okay.
So with your permission, I'd like to call this dealer and say, bring it on east and we'll take a look at it.
How many miles did you say?
Just 2,000 miles.
2,000, yeah.
So I assume they're gonna flap at it, or are they gonna drive it out?
They'll drive it, they'll drive it.
So that'll be 3,000.
Another 3,000 miles.
I just want, I just want full disclosure.
So then it could be 170,000 miles, I mean, 170,000 miles, all right.
And we, so just recapping, replacement cost, if it was not a demo, was, was how much again?
190.
Right, 190, and we actually, we're, we're starting to get prices on, on the, the latest cost of, of a similar truck that we, we purchased in 2009. And two of the vendors that come in at $200,000 because of the emission standard changes and the cost for those emissions. So we're gonna have to look at this closely.
Chief, what do we budget?
190.
You have to have the cost of the paint job. If we want us, we can get away with white, matches your-
It's really white, I'm telling you right now.
It's on the weekends, we could sell milk here.
All right, is there any objection?
No.
For the chief exploring that? Okay, you're good.
Thank you.
Anything else you have for us?
That's it.
All right, there was an announcement that pertained to your department, so you might wanna just accept the kudos. This was addressed to you, chief, and it was on behalf, from the Ware Fire Department. On behalf of the Ware Fire Department and the town of Ware, we'd like to extend our sincere thanks to you and the members of your department for their quick response and assistance at the structure fire in our town on Thursday, January 6th, 2011. These tough economic times, all towns seem to be experiencing a shortage of available help, so we truly appreciate the response we received from Goffstown. Again, thanks to you and your crew for the assistance and continued support. That's Raymond Eaton, interim chief. So thank you. And I think we used, we used the, the tower truck on that one, right?
The tower truck did that, and the, the crew did a great job on that.
All right.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I know we have our police chief here. There was also a nice email that was sent. And regarding our police department, the person who, who called in said, "I received a call from a John Zaconia Plastah who wanted to comment on the performance of Officer Defasis from a suspicious person calling Peppermint Tuesday afternoon. John stated that he is a retired government worker who was responsible for employee management training. He said his interaction with Officer Defasis was nothing short of exceptional. He said although he could tell Tom was not an old veteran officer, he had the demeanor that was totally professional and with super, and had a super personality. I told him that I would pass along that, and he appreciated the good work, and he corrected me to say excellent work. He felt that we were doing something right by having people like Officer Defasis in our ranks. So please extend our thanks in that regard. It's always nice to hear good news." Any other announcements? All right, it's a 6:20, I feel like on schedule, this is unbelievable. We have two presentations, and Selectman, one here? Okay, our first presentation, if, Dave French, if you would mind coming up. Every year, the, the Board of Selectmen dedicates the Town Report. And it's with the pleasure that we dedicate that to you, Dave. You'll notice that it's large print, and this was the first time, because we knew that you were in your retirement, you know, you had some vision issues, so we did put it full, extra big-
Thank you so much.
For you. And what I'd like to do is I'd like to read to you the dedication. "It is with great pride that the Board of Selectmen dedicates the 2010 Annual Report to Retired Parks and Recreation Director David French. Dave started his career as Parks and Rec Director in Gorham, New Hampshire in 1974, where he served for four years. In February 1978, he relocated to Goffstown to start his 32-year career as Goffstown's Parks and Recreation Director. During those years, Dave was instrumental in many improvements to the Parks and Recreation facilities and programs. Many of us remember his daughter Heather and his son Stephen by his side during many events and programs. His wife Barbara, who's here tonight, was also involved with many of the activities at Parks and Recreation. It was truly a family effort. Dave's fondest memory is seeing his early program participants now coaching their children in the Parks and Recreation programs. And also seeing his son coach in the program was also rewarding. In recognition of his lifetime commitment to the Town of Goffstown Parks and Recreation Program, the Board of Selectmen officially proclaimed January 11th, 2011, as Dave French Day. So it's with great pride and pleasure that on behalf of the Board, we dedicate the 2010 Annual Report to you."
Thank you. I, I was not expecting this tonight. Again, you're a wonderful town administrator, has a tendency to keep things as a surprise. And I appreciate the fact that, you know, Barbara and I have already had our early bird dinner. That's right, Waltons will be on very soon. But thank you so much. This is really, I, I, I never expected this at all. And I'm really, I'm really touched. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
And remember, we do like you that much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan, your time's coming.
We took the wine glass out of the picture.
Thank you. All right. Now, we're wondering why the, the folks from, from the rail trail are here, and why don't you all, you know, come on up and maybe perhaps stand there? And Selectman Pierce, why don't, I know that you're- I see the pledge pin on your uniform.
Vote, vote for me.
Right. Last year, the Board decided that we wanted to recognize volunteers in our community who really have gone, gone above and beyond in, in making Goffstown a better place to live. Last year's recipient was, was Fred Platt. And when we were discussing this, we said, you know, what, what greater group that's really contributed so much over the last few years than the Goffstown Rail Trail Group? And you've done so much work in our community, and I know this has been a very long and, long process between trying to gain ownership and just clearing it, and it still continues to be. But the passion and the, the, that you have in making this rail trail come to fruition has just been incredible to see over the years. And I wanna wish you the best as you continue in those endeavors, and thanks, Selectman Pierce. He's been a great steward of that on, on the Board of Selectmen. I'd like to just read to you what is in the, the Town Report. "The Goffstown Board of Selectmen names the Friends of the Rail Trail as the 2010 Volunteers of the Year. This group of dedicated volunteers organizes trail cleanup days to maintain our trail and works on trail improvements with the town's Rail Trail Steering Committee. They promote use of the trail and assist in prioritizing projects in trail development. Their efforts have improved the quality of life in Goffstown, and we appreciate all of your hard work." And I'd like to-
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mole, do you would like to say anything on behalf of the group, or?
Just real briefly, you know, on behalf of our, our members and our volunteers, you know, we'd like to thank you for the recognition. And, you know, it's made more rewarding by the fact that there are more and more people all the time getting out and using the trail. Really like to see that, and that's why we do it.
Okay. Now, do you have any, any rail trail events that are going on right now? I know people, I've seen people snowshoeing and cross-country skiing and-
Yeah, we don't have anything specifically scheduled yet. It'll be-
Your cleanup day will be when?
Well, if, if we hold according to our past pattern, we'll probably start our trail work in May.
Okay, I will give a little plug. We're, we're doing a 250th anniversary this year, and we're having a challenge in Goffstown. And you are one, the rail trail is one of our challenges, so people will be able to get, they have, they're gonna attend a cleanup day or go to one of your, your walking tours, and they'll, they'll get stamped for, and if you get enough stamps, you get a T-shirt, a membership T-shirt. So you'll hopefully see a lot more people on the trails trying to get their stamp. So we're gonna give it to you, I think, Mole. Don't lose the stamp, it's very-
Very valuable.
Very valuable. Well, you have to guard it with your life, okay?
I'll go, I'll go out, yeah, the challenge-
Not yet, they're gonna be coming out in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, yeah, I did see an article on it.
Yeah, all right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're putting the minutes off. Scott's done, so we're gonna go right to our town administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your weekly meeting schedule, this is it. CBA meets tomorrow night, and that's about it, and we don't have a rep there. Steve?
Is mine in the rack? I think, that's where I went.
Your what? Packet?
Yes.
Your what?
Your packet should be in your mail basket.
Well, that's where I ran. I was, I was there when you were calling me back.
Oh.
So continue, 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 I'll be right back.
We can wait for you to get back.
No, 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 continue, I'll be off-
I don't think it was there.
It wasn't there?
I don't think it was either.
Grab Nixon.
Because I looked earlier, they were all gone.
One's grabbing.
She have anything, she have anything that she wants to-
Kathy, were you here for any specific purpose tonight?
Um, I think it's gonna be a discussion of legislative issues.
Oh, that's on, um, yeah, on the 14th is when the state reps are coming in.
They're just identifying the issues and the process they're going to use to identify those issues.
And one will be, I would think, inquiring with staff and department heads on what issues they-
Yeah, what issues you have, yeah.
Right, but there won't be a discussion of the issues tonight. Okay, I'll set, did you find a statement?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good.
No, when I first ran into you, when you were calling me in, I, I thought you was trying to-
Oh, I thought you were going in there to find the book.
You're getting scolded.
I was being scolded, yes.
Oh, I have that voice, sorry.
It's very stern.
Mother hen.
Okay.
Consensus folder.
We'll skip right to the consensus folder. You have AP warrants tonight and letters to the US Post Office regarding the additional zip code for Goffstown, and a letter to Mr. Wilson regarding dumping ashes on town property.
Yeah, I just have one question. The first one about the zip code, has there been contact with Felix Kowchak, who was on the committee, that zip code committee? He chaired that committee? Is he guarding it?
No, not yet. He was on vacation last week and-
I know, he was on-
But he was an advocate for change in zip code.
I understand, but the fact of a separate one, because that was a discussion with the committee, and I just, I would feel more comfortable if at least it's discussed with him and he's on board, rather than having a letter go out without consultation with that, that's my opinion.
I don't know what everybody else's, but I, I think it's our Board's position to, I, I respect Felix, but-
Well, I understand, and I'm gonna vote against it. I'll just tell you, if you wanna pull it out, otherwise I'm gonna just vote against the entire consensus folder. Either pull that one out.
Okay, well, what's, I don't, I'm personally, I, I think we've talked about this before, and we were exploring it. I don't, I personally don't, this has been, come up before. I, I don't think it's anything new. I've heard a few people say, "Why are we doing it?", but I've also heard a lot of other people saying-
That's not my, my concern. My concern is that the committee was working on combining the zip code with 03045. This is for a separate zip code, which was a different issue, and I just think that it's appropriate to at least have that discussion with him.
And I, I would also, again, I, this is, you have the history, I don't on this one. This is, this letter is exploratory in nature. It has, it just says that we're looking into it. And I think if, if they come back and they say, "No, we're not, we're not interested", then, then doesn't, if they come back and say, "Yeah, we'll entertain that possibility", then I think we go and we contact Felix or members of that group saying, "Hey, what do you, you know, what do you think?"
I would just, I would just feel more comfortable, and I think it's more appropriate, to at least run it by him and give him the courtesy of letting him know that we're doing this. I mean, if, if you insist on sending the letter out, at least-
Copy him.
Give him that so that he's, he's in the loop. Because I've asked him about it, and I asked him a few weeks back if he was contacted to anybody. Because I told him a year ago when we started that he'd be contacted. I spoke to him about three weeks prior, and at this point, nobody's ever contacted him from the town. And I just don't think it's appropriate to just send that letter out like that.
Okay. What's the pleasure of, of the Board, a carbon copy to him or a cover letter to say, "We've tried to contact you", this is a letter for exploratory reasons, and if we, how do you wanna approach that?
Just a courtesy copy would be fine from my point of view. And once again, I'll reinforce the fact, this is a, a request to the regional postal officials, would you look into the concept of giving an additional zip code for our town and to replace that portion which is currently 102. And it's up to them to come back with the first indication. Yes, it's feasible, we'll look into- And it's up to them to come back with the first indication, yes, it's feasible, we'll look into it. Or there's serious complications, and we'll take it from there. So it's not a done deal. It's exploratory.
Any thoughts?
I'm good with the exploratory piece.
All right.
I guess, to me, where I, the reason why I would prefer to do it the other way, because then Felix could come up with, I mean, you say that there is certain things that are going to be the same issues as to whether or not it's oh three, oh four, five, or oh three, oh four, six, for example. Okay? And those are some of the issues that were identified that people who didn't, who were concerned that had it. So it's going to be that, in all of that, those obstacles that are going to be there, and I think that it's appropriate to at least have that discussion with Felix.
My sentiment is that I am not in favor or disfavor of this zip code thing. And I've heard both sides of this. However, to put this thing to rest either one way or explore another way requires a letter gets sent to the, to the post office officials. And I see that as the precursor to this. Because if that gets stopped in its tracks, then there's no, there is, there is no harm, there's no foul. If they come back and they say, we're not interested, it's done. If they come back and say, yeah, we'll explore that, then I think it's, then it becomes our decision as to, one, do we want to pursue it? And if we do pursue it, what avenues do we want to take? Because this is not one of these decisions that everybody thinks is a wonderful idea. There are people out there who do not think that it's a wonderful idea. And that's when I think we then would reach back to Felix and the folks that served in that committee and/or anybody else who might want to get involved and say, okay, let's give you a couple of months and let's talk about the pros and cons.
I would just feel more comfortable, because if Felix came back and said that there's a reason why we didn't do that, and here it is, A, B, C, and D, why we did it. And if you're going to change it, if you want to go that way, we may not support it. I'd just like to know that upfront, and that's where I'm coming from. That's all. I mean, I said it three times.
It appears, again, not to, it appears that there's three of us that would like to send the letter. Do you want me to separate this thing out on the consensus folder? Or would you be okay? Leaving it in. It's a, it's a carbon copy to Felix, basically, at this point.
I'll just, if you're going to leave it in a consensus folder, I'm voting no on the entire thing then.
Okay, we'll separate the consensus folder, that item. So although, is there anything else in the consensus folder other than what you mentioned?
Yeah, there's more in the second page.
Yeah, I just, just for the.
Okay, that's fine.
So you want to just vote on that one right now?
Yeah, we'll vote on that one right now, sending the letter to the post, post office officials with a carbon copy to Felix Pelchat, who served as a committee chair of this, of this issue years ago. Need a motion to that effect?
Yes, motion.
You want to second it? Second it? All those in favor of that motion say?
Back and just for the record, I'm against it because it's top-down management.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All those against?
Aye.
Right, nay. That's three one. Now, the rest of the consensus folder?
There's also an affidavit for Superior Court. Authorized to you to sign this affidavit stating that the town does not own or operate or maintain the playground equipment at Mountain View Middle School. Also IRS Form eighty-two, eighty-three to authorize chairman to sign this form based on the attached appraisal of land purchased last year in accordance with our previous agreement with the landowners. Employee status forms for Jeffrey Miles, EMTI, Laura Roy, EMTI, and Alyssa Bartlett, some of the library aides. And Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission contracts for the transportation impact fee study for forty-nine hundred and the school impact fee study for thirty-two, twenty.
Okay, I need a motion to accept the consensus folder. And I need a second.
I apologize. Just a question regarding the, the contracts regarding the transportation. I'll be honest, it's the first time I see that. Is this something that's annual?
No, I think it's every five years we have to do the study.
And the study is to.
Look at the fees and see if they're in line with.
We're talking the busing fees, et cetera, or?
No, this is the impact fees that developers pay. When they put a new house up.
I just saw the transportation impact fee. That's what I, all right, all right.
You're good?
Good.
Okay. All those in favor of the consensus folder say aye?
Aye.
Aye, four zero.
Thank you. You also have some correspondence that requires action. You have a letter from Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission requesting comments on the New Hampshire DOT ten-year plan. In the planning report tonight, you see that they have added the intersection over on one fourteen, their benchmark, gentle slopes. They've added that. So they've done their review, and that's all they wanted to add to the DOT plan. We have formulated a letter from the board supporting that addition to.
Right, if you, if you remember, that was, EDC has been working on that as a site of future development. So I would not think there'll be any objection to that. And we have to authorize just our signature?
Yeah, there's, the letter is in your signature folder tonight. Also, you have a letter from Medville regarding a resolution to dealing with abandoned homes in Medville. This is preliminary discussions. I would feel more comfortable getting Attorney Drescher involved with that discussion.
Also the assessor.
Yes, definitely.
I read that, and I do have a few concerns, but I think it can be worked out.
All right, so this, this I think has to get put on. Yeah.
More follow-up in that.
Yeah.
And you also have a left.
Excuse me, would it be appropriate, Mr. Chairman, for a non-public session to discuss what we're going to ask the town lawyer to look into for us?
Yes, we can do that. We can, we can put this into non-public. Let me just make a note.
Rather than just look at the memo from Medville.
He's aware of, there had been proposed legislation to address this at the state level.
Okay.
Also, you have a letter from Granite State Treasurer Hunters Club requesting permission to conduct a hunt in the area of the Ollonkinik Ski area. I did follow up with an email from that gentleman asking him, what do they do with their fines? And they say, and if he's done it, that he has a towns. He said, we have had permission to hold each outings at Bearburg State Park and in Concord. If we find items of historical significance, we notify the local historical society. In two thousand and ten, we were able to turn over and implement dating back to the eighteen hundred used to shape logs of building cabins to the historical society in Sterling, Mass. His daughter had found it on the trolley trail in Sterling. So that's what they do.
Any comment?
Was this reviewed by the Conservation Commission?
Not yet. I would suggest, since they maintain most of the area up in that part of our town, that we ask them to review this.
What's the time sensitivity of this?
I think he's starting to plan the outings that start in April.
All right.
I think you do want to wait till the snow is gone.
I would feel better with a recommendation from the Conservation Commission before the board gives the authority for this organization.
Just putting out there, I mean, obviously, I understand the conservation piece. I'm going to bring this over to Phil, Historic, Historic Commission. Do they have interest of any of this to go out there and look also, or?
Well, I mean, if, if, I don't, I don't speak for the historic.
I know, I'm just, I'm just asking, you know, your thoughts on it, that's all. Meaning, would they, would they have an interest? I mean, I imagine they're going to be going up the old railroad bed looking for those railroad spikes and those bolts and beams. I mean, I think most, in fact, I think traditionally a lot of hikers do go up there and look for that. I'm just saying, I don't know if that's something that Historic Commission ever spoke about or not. I'm not trying to put you on his spot. I don't know if that was a.
Well, Historic District Commission has more jurisdiction. The Historic District Commission has jurisdiction over the districts. Not really that. But I mean, as far as, as far as a heritage commission, that might be a different issue. But I don't, I don't think, they won't meet until another month, because they just met. And that would be out of.
My, you know, I'm just going to say this. I, I, I don't think we're stepping on the Conservation Commission's toes by approving this or not approving it. And I'll say this, when we put this on their plate, that's another thing that they have to do. I just don't see them coming back and saying, oh, this is going to be a horrible thing. And as long as this group understands that, that they should not be disturbing, which they say that they're, they have a reputation. Obviously, they've been doing this for a long time. They're not going to disturb the landscape. They're not going to be doing anything that's going to harm this property whatsoever. And if anything, they're going to be cleaning, probably doing more cleanup and picking up debris. I don't have a problem, you know, saying yes, yes, right now. Then it goes on their agenda as they come back to us. And before you know it, we've spent collectively, you know, five hours and all this debate and time and agendas to give somebody permission to walk up a mountain and look for where the metal detector spikes. And I just don't, sometimes we just have to make a decision and move on.
Can I make a suggestion? That if we approve this, that it be subject to the town administrator just checking with the towns that they gave as references, make sure that they do.
Right, that they are good stewards of the, right, and they're not, you know, they have good intentions and that they don't do anything improper. So I'll, I'll go ahead. I'll make the, I'll make that motion to that effect, that we approve it conditional upon the references secured by the town administrator of other communities. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second it? Any other discussion?
Let's make discussion before we go on. From the little I know right here, I'm not in favor of this, just to go forward. I mean, it just, at this point, all I look at is that there's going to be a group of people going up there digging and looking for, you know, pieces of metal historic. I'm not quite sure what that means, how in depth, how many people. So I am not in favor of this, in favor of this at this time.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motions, even by saying aye? Aye? All those against?
Nay.
Three one, motion passes.
Moving on to assessor recommendations. You have an intent to excavate and a report of excavated materials from the Mackey Holdings, LLC. You also have elderly exemptions, map six, lot seventeen D sixty-five, map six, lot twenty-two, one forty-three, map thirty-eight, lot eighty-eight, map twelve, lot thirteen, four, six, and map six, lot thirty-seven, sixty. You also have veterans' tax credits for map twenty-one, lot forty-nine, lots, map seventeen, lot one seventy-three, and map six, lot twenty-two, forty-two. You also have lien use change tax lien releases on map six, lot sixty-seven, eight, and sixty-seven dash twelve. You have a report of timber cut on map three, lots forty-seven, one, and forty-seven, ten, and a tax deferral lien applications on map thirty-four, lot one forty-nine, map thirty-five, lot seventeen. And the assessor recommends these.
Motion to accept the assessor's recommendations. Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, four zero.
Thank you. Our health officer's appointment expires on March sixth. I've completed the reappointment papers from Artesia's health officer. I'd also recommend that we consider appointing a deputy health officer. We haven't had one, and I talked to Chief O'Brien, and he's willing to take on this duty.
All those, I need a motion on that.
I'm going to have a question on that regarding.
Hold on, we'll get, I'll just get, I'll get it on the table first.
Motion to accept the recommendation of the town administrator.
Please second, David, second it. Steve, question?
A question regarding the deputy health officer. When you say Chief O'Brien will take it on, who would, I mean, how is that going to be? Who is he going to assign it to, and what does that mean?
No, it's him.
He doesn't assign it up? He actually does it?
Right, he would be doing.
Right. In Mark's absence, he would be our deputy health officer.
So you're saying it's just, he's just a cover for if Mark was out?
Yeah, but it also gets him in the information loop when emails come through from the State Department of Health regarding pandemic or triple E or West Nile.
So these are things that they're normally.
Thank you. From his EMT response.
All right, all those in favor of that motion say aye?
Aye.
Aye, four zero.
Thank you. Gas and diesel. Encloses memo from former finance director regarding our gas and diesel contract, which expires once we've consumed the quantities contracted, which means we are under a contract until about mid-March. The first decision the board, the board needs to make is if they want to contract for a fixed price or a fixed differential. A differential is basically the cost of transporting. So it would be that cost transporting over whatever the market price was at the time. Considering the recent increases due to the world market, you need to consider the volatility of the market. The second decision you need to make is to go with state bid or go out to bid. Based on Jen's previous experience, she recommended going with state bid. Either way, you need to also authorize someone, probably me, to act immediately, as these are daily prices, especially if you go with fixed. She gave you the fixed prices back a while ago. Those are not the prices today.
All right. Is there a reason why the second decision can't come first? That we, let's say, if we go with the same bid as the state is doing? Wasn't that fixed on?
Either way, you have to make both those decisions. Either go with the state bid, which is Burke, and who, he's our current.
That's what you meant.
Vendor.
That's what you meant then by going with the state bid as the provider.
Correct.
So is it, do, do you have a recommendation or do you have any preference based upon past history as to what? I mean, obviously, no one is a, can predict the future cost of, of, of fuel. But based upon our past history, is there any option that you think might give us a happy medium, hedge, hedge our position?
We've done well on fixed prices, but usually when we go out, the price of gasoline has been low. It's not low right now.
Question. State bid, when was that one set?
They go for a two-year period, and it's, and it changes. So, you know, there's a lot of districts throughout the state. So I don't want you to think that the state bid is a fixed price throughout the state. It isn't. It changes for each district.
No, I understand. But when was it, when was it based on, or what's it, what is, what is it, what is it tied to, I guess? Do we know?
They have a differential on one, which is not a fixed price. It changes all the time. The differential stays the same, but the market price changes constantly. And then the other one, they got a fixed rate at that point in time that they went out to bid, which usually is, you know, in the fall.
How good is that fixed rate, though?
It's not good today at all. I'd have to call tomorrow, and they only hold it for twenty-four hours.
We have a month of grace for this to occur.
Correct.
Right, I guess the reason why I'm asking the questions I have is that I don't want somebody to think that we're getting a fixed price that went out that's six months ago.
Oh, God, no.
No, no, what we are is based on, on the value, on the, on the market value, today's market, right?
I believe we have, do we have to make a decision tonight?
No.
No. I know, to last us through, right. So I think we want to take this memo and sleep on it and figure out what, and we've had special meetings to sign off. But one thing that I, whatever decision, I just want to take one vote tonight to authorize, whenever we do make a decision, to authorize the town administrator to, to effectuate these decisions. Because I know sometimes that slips through the cracks, then we have to hold a special meeting. So you're still going to get direction from us, but I wanted you to be the one who is authorized to execute.
Right.
Yeah. You know, we're, we're in a, we're in a catch twenty-two here, because the last couple, you know, the last week or so, gasoline, it's gone up twenty-one cents because of Libya. All right? If Libya calms down, it could come down. The other thing is, is if the moratorium is lifted in the Gulf, it'll also drop prices. So we're in a catch twenty-two. If we act on it now because we're concerned that the prices are going up, we want to lock on it now. I mean, we could lock in on it now, and then these things happen over the next couple of.
Now, they don't, they don't hedge in the sense that you, if you locked in, it goes lower, you pay a fee, and you can get the lower rate. Some companies do that. They don't, they don't do that.
I think you're talking like the oil company does that. I don't know if they, I don't think it's a few.
What we're dealing with is eleven o'clock on Wednesday when the prices come out during the week. So that's, that's when the prices will change.
So a question is, was this for a fixed amount of gallons for a certain period of time?
That's how it was done, and it was estimated that we'd use those gallons in a year, and it's gone, it will be like thirteen months instead of a year.
This next contract would be similar, fixed number of gallons. Which brings it to the next. It's based on our historic usage?
Right, correct.
Let's bring you to the next question. Do we need to have this done by mid-March? What if we're looking at the situation such as, such as we would like to go another month of just purchasing without, without being a contract, but purchasing at those prices of that day? Can we do that?
I'd have to check.
For a set smaller amount to cover it through a period of time if we chose to do that.
I'd have to check that. I know on heating oil, we had a, you know, a provision to go an extra thirty days beyond the contract period at the same prices. I'm not sure that existed for gasoline and diesel. I'm doubting that they would have done that.
Okay, and if they didn't do, and I, I understand you're referring to an extension. I'm just referring to just that, at this point, that contract, that old contract will end, and we figure it'll be somewhere around March. If we were not, if we were, if we still wanted to hold regarding how, where we want, who we want to purchase and where that contract, where that bid would be, could we purchase just some for a interim period?
It would probably be at the market, the.
Market value at the time.
Rack value plus the differential.
Delivery.
Let me just something to think about.
It's, you know, filling a large tank. It's just not saying we want three hundred gallons.
But I could call our current vendor and ask that question, but that's what I assume it would be.
Okay. Okay. Um, does the board wish to, to, um, have a motion to authorize the town administrator now? As I, I would do a contingent, a contingent motion just so it's all, that's, that's, um, done with. Because I don't wanna get in that position, um, where we've had to, you know, make decisions and special meetings. I, I would, I, um, I would like to make a, I'll make the motion that we, um, that the board will authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with the, uh, vendor so chosen by the Board of Selectmen and for the, uh, for the unleaded gas and diesel fuel contracts as, as later determined. That will give you, Sue, the ability, once we do that, you can then sign it. Because we've had issues before. We had to sign it on like a Thursday morning and there was like no time and-
That's because Wednesday comes out Wednesday.
It's too volatile. We cannot, we cannot wait to have a meeting and then authorize Sue to sign it. So, once we go with a, um, a methodology and we let Sue be the signer of it, then she then has to immediately sign it once that offer comes out. There's twenty-four hours of notice that we have. This is not one of these things where you can wait a week. So, um, did, was that, I know the motion was kinda fuzzy, but does everybody kinda understand what, what, what I'm trying to accomplish here? All right. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
All right. Any other questions on it? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Four, nothing. All right. Identifying legislation of concern.
Yes. Our state reps will be in on March fourteenth at six fifteen to meet with the board, and some of them have asked if there's any specific bills that you're interested in discussing so that they can, you know, review them and be ready to discuss them. Uh, there's several ways you can identify the bills that are of interest. Uh, as you know, you get your legislative bulletins every Friday from L G C, which identifies some. Um, Selectman Devanzus sits on Mac, so he's aware of some of the ones that are of municipal interest, and, um-
All right, let's do this. Let's put a deadline for next, next week. Any selectmen who has any legislations, we get, we get, you know, in, in there and online, of all the legislation that affects us as a municipality. So, if you have anything that you want more information or you want a leg, uh, one of our state reps to speak to or do any research, let Sue know, um, by next week, and then you'll get with staff.
Yes, and I'll get submissions from staff, uh, of what's of interest to them. I know the assessor has pointed out some to me, and our town clerk has pointed out a bill that's of interest to her, um, and I'll pass those on to you.
Okay. And how many have kind of R S V P'd so far?
Um, most of them.
Okay.
At least half of them, I'd say, have R S V P.
Um, is there someone who's going, and then they're all gonna kinda take turns speaking, or how's this gonna work?
Um, well, it depends how you wanna format it. Uh, do you wanna do it by bill and then have discussion and ask them-
Yeah, I think that might-
Express your concerns of the bill and then ask for feedback from them.
Right. And, um, just, how do I, I'm gonna, this is an opportunity for our board to express concerns to our, our state reps to, uh, impact how they advocate or not advocate for a particular position, and for them to have that interaction with us to say, okay, um, here's a particular bill. Well, you may not like it, but did you know this or this? But I-
Yeah, your perspective and how it's gonna impact you.
Our, our perspective. This is not an opportu, I, I don't see this as our state reps coming in here, um, advocating a political agenda.
Right.
So, I just wanted that to be, to be clear. We're looking out individually for the, um, interests of our community and for running this municipality. They're looking out hopefully for the same types of, of interest. They may know more than we do based upon what's going on in the State House, which will be very helpful, but, um, I just wanna make sure that it doesn't turn into a-
No, I'm, most of them-
Political pep rally or something.
Most of them responded like, which bills are the interest in this, that we just wanna be prepared.
Okay. Because one of the things, um, I know we had some discussion at the Budget Committee, and it was pretty helpful, you know, and there, we had, you know, John and, John Burton, John Heiko, and we were talking about, um, you know, just different, some different bills that are coming down and, uh, the downshifting and things of that nature. So, it is, it is good to at least let them share how these things, how these bills kind of impact us. All right.
Okay. That's all we had for public session.
All right. Uh, we'll then go into, Kathy, is there anything that you want, you, you're here for at all?
No, I just wanted to hear how the, um, legislative issues were gonna take place so I could make sure I got the information.
All right. One of the things that, um, I would hope that we would focus hard on is that there are some legislative things that have huge impacts to us. Um, I'm talking hundreds of thousands of dollars. And then there are other ones that don't have, you know, that they are, they don't have just a huge impact, or they might be philosophical in nature, et cetera. But I think we have to also then ask our reps to prioritize, saying, you know, here are some, here are the top five. So, think about that, too. Here are the ones that we have to give the most priority to, and if you lose the fight on some of these other ones, then kinda, you know, kinda so be it. But, um, sometimes I see that even on, on our own, when we, on our, on our own business, we will spend an hour on something that has a very modest, uh, return, and then, you know, just, we don't get our bang for their buck all the time.
It's no different than town meeting.
Yeah.
You know?
I know. I know.
Eighteen million dollar budget passes.
Yeah.
And a two hundred dollar special article has a discussion for half an hour.
That's my, thank you. That's my point. So, um, so next is selectmen's discussion. Uh, any new business? No? Any old business?
Where was committee-
And I'm not looking over to the left side for any particular reason. Um, anything that-
Just, uh, last week, uh, I guess this goes in the committee reports. There was a, a meeting of the Highway Safety Committee, um, and the results of their recommendations on signs and as such would, is gonna come to this board, uh, later in March. It'll be the results of actually two sessions, one in September from the Highway Safety and one last week.
Okay. All right. So, let's, um, uh, go to committee reports. Uh, Budget Committee, I attended the last Budget Committee meeting, and it was a recap of, of the, of the budget years, the cycle. Uh, talked a lot about how the, how the process went. Certainly, we had some newer Budget Committee members. I, I, my only comment that I made to the Budget Committee was that, um, it would've, it would've been probably maybe a more, uh, better use of time had we known that their goal was a level tax rate from the outset, not, not, not per se a ten percent reduction. And, and we went through that exercise. Do I think that it was helpful to a degree? Yeah. Um, but I'm also hopeful that, uh, next year, as we go through it, again, a lot of that learning curve, I think, well, depends who gets elected, but, uh, I think there was a lot of, uh, knowledge that was, that was garnered throughout the process. So, hopefully, it'll be a little bit, um, more streamlined. But I say that every year and it never, never seems to happen. But, um, overall, I think at the end of the day, I think that our committee, our, our, our board, um, you know, I think we made some, some good compromises and, and offered, uh, had a pretty good relationship with the, with the Budget Committee this year. Um, certainly, they expressed their opinions and we did ours, but I thought it was, overall, I thought it was done, you know, respectfully and, you know, there's always gonna be a natural tension between a Budget Committee and, and the, uh, Board of Selectmen, and, um, I don't think it was anything unusual. As a matter of fact, I thought it, overall, I thought it went pretty well. Next is, uh, any questions about the Budget Committee or anything of that nature? No? Uh, Library Trustees, uh, attended, uh, that meeting as well. You'll see a tab seven C. Um, this was a part of their, uh, minutes. There was, um, a request from the trustees, which I think Sue has kind of already tackled. They just wanted to be notified, uh, if there are any abutter notifications. Because the town actually owns the library land, we, as the municipality, are the abutter. Um, they just wanted a courtesy copy, uh, if there's any, um, any abutters that are, they're doing any improvements to their, you know, land, et cetera. And there is a gentleman next door who does have some plans that, uh, which he's been very nice about sharing with, with the, with the trustees, but they just wanted to make sure that they would be notified. And I think, Sue, you've kinda taken care of that by putting them on the tax card. So, if there is anything that goes on, you know, whether it be Patty or someone, will, will, will drop a note, a letter to the trustees so they know what's, if there's any planned improvements. Next was Parks and Recreation.
I was unable to attend that one.
The minutes are in the-
Right. Now, this one, um, the, I just want, if I can call to your attention, as I was able to, after I left the library, when I went to this one, and I came in under, uh, the Parsons land, you know, that, that the land, the town land that's owned, um, that's owned by the town, that was earmarked for, um, cemetery use. Later, now we know that that's not, uh, suitable for cemetery use because of the high water table. Parks and Recreation is losing Cemetery Field, um, as we're gonna be, we're expanding West Lawn, and they would like to, um, kinda replicate what's at Cemetery Field now, just on the other side of that wetland. Um, and they would like to explore that with the cemetery trustees, and I believe, uh, Director Will Helmy is having a conversation with, with a trustee or two, just to get their feelings on that. Uh, Sue did some research on the, uh, the vote and the deed. The deed is in the town's name, but the vote was for the purpose of cemetery use back in the twenties, I believe. It's a long time ago, right? Yeah, you did it a while ago. My recollection, that's what, that's what I recall, so don't hold me to it, folks. But it was, it's, it is owned by the town, but the vote was for cemetery use. Um, if the cemetery trustees, knowing that they cannot, uh, use it for cemetery use, if they are comfortable with letting, um, Parks and Rec use it, there's two things that can happen. One, continue as business as usual, we've been doing on the Cemetery Field, or, um, maybe just codifying that this land is gonna be for Parks and Recreation use, and then put it as a warrant, next year, clean it up, and let everybody know that this is not gonna be earmarked for a cemetery. It's gonna be earmarked for, uh, recreation use. Um, it does not need, according to Rick and the commissioners, um, their preliminary assessment is that the land, it's crowned in a certain respect, but with minimal work, they can use it for practices like lacrosse or soccer, good rectangular uses, uses for it. Um, there would be some issue with trying to create like, uh, like they did at Cemetery Field, uh, like a gravel-type parking area. Um, there's a, there's a couple of houses that abut the property, um, so that those, those folks would have to be spoken to, and I think Rick is gonna have some conversations with the homeowners. There's about three homeowners that are, that are in somewhat proximity, um, and that's really about it. And they're, they're, they wanna explore this because they know that the D P W is gonna be expanding West Lawn this summer, and that may be an opportunity, that if there had to be some slight modifications to, to, you know, to take out a little bit of a crown or to, to do a little bit of work or mow it, that the, that the equipment from that would already be right there, and if they needed any, any extra work, that they could accommodate that. So, yeah.
Do you know if there's already a, a driveway access into that park?
There is a little, there is a very little nub of it, right? It's not, um, yeah, I think that the-
Cause the state, it's a state highway at that part, right?
I say that, well, as you, as you come onto Parsons, you make the right turn onto Parsons, there's a little driveway-
Yes.
There, but that-
It's from Parsons.
But I think we're, that's somewhat premature because I think we've got a lot of, we have cemetery trustee hurdle to overcome, the commissioners, you know, I'm talking to, and then if that all comes together, then it's like, okay, where do you wanna put your, you know, your twelve or fifteen parking spaces?
This idea was, um, brought up when we met with the cemetery trustees.
Yes, it was. Yeah. And they seem to be okay with it, but I think it's time now where it's, that was a conceptual conversation. Now, the Parks and Rec folks are beyond the concept. Now, they wanna start to execute that because we're, they're losing a field this summer.
Yeah, they seem, they seemed very receptive when they met with us.
I agree with the process you're describing.
I seem to recall we had a discussion, though, of a mausoleum someplace, and I don't know if it was on that parcel, but I thought-
No, it's in the, as you look at the cemetery fields that exist now, it's going to be towards the back and a little bit off to the left.
Yeah. On the, on where the actual, that, that needs to be where the actual, yeah, where the field is now. That's where they're-
Okay. Okay. No, the reason what, what, what I was concerned about when you talked about because of the water table, and with that water table, you might be able to construct a mausoleum for above-ground areas.
What I'd like to do is, I'd like, we have not met with the cemetery trustees in a year, so I would like to-
Been that long?
It's been a while, yeah.
I thought we had-
It's been a year. Yeah.
Okay.
I'd like to invite them to a selectmen's meeting to, uh, you know, to discuss the, and Carl might need to come as well, to discuss the, uh, the plans for the expansion, uh, of West Lawn. Is as of now, um, I don't believe that there are many plots left over there. Um, if there are, there are double plots.
Well, in the budget, there was-
Right.
D P W was gonna be doing the work over there.
Right. So, if you recall, we, we had, uh, we had a lot of money in the budget, which, for a private contractor to do the work. D P W then budgeted ten thousand dollars of materials so that they could then do the work. That was phase one. I just wanna re, I just wanna, just wanna get everybody's thought process the same. Phase two was, was the other, was, was a professional coming in and pinning the actual, um, plots, which we do not have that skill set for. We have-
We didn't budget for that this year.
And we did not this year. No, that's next year. So, this is a phase one and a phase two.
We were, we were good enough to, we felt we were accurate enough to pin for the road.
The road. You got it. Right. So, we're pinning for the roads. We are not pinning for the actual plots themselves. Um, and then phase two, if you remember, was that, that pinning, and it was also landscaping and, and a fence. All right? So, our plan was to try to, was to do this over a two-year period. Um, according, I ran into Joan Kinesny at the, at the hardware store, and she just, I, I think that the cemetery trustees just want some assurances that this is a two-year plan because they're very nervous about it stretching out anything longer, cause they, there's no more room. So, we have to, you know, that's why I wanna have them in here to talk about the urgency here. This is not something that we can put off. I mean, we've already put it off, and that's, this is, this must be executed in, in two years.
Question, uh, where are we with the design and the plan for this? Where, where are we?
They did hire a company to design it. Um, and I believe we're at, um, I would, how do I put it, this, uh, to use an analogy, um, the D P W is gonna do like the rough framing and carpentry and then we're bringing in the-
I didn't, we had that discussion, yeah, but I didn't know where they were with the plan because what, what reason is, is, my understanding is that there was a plan at one time.
Yeah.
The design did come by us.
Yeah, the design came by us.
Design came by.
No, 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 no. Prior to a company, that, there was a plan that was done years ago.
Oh, that I don't know. There, but, but a plan did come before us as to what it, the whole, what it's, what's gonna look like.
I understand. I guess where I was, my question, reason I'm asking the question, is this current plan based on this older plan?
No. No. It's based upon the most current plan, which I believe was done a year or two ago.
What the current trustees would like to see built.
Yeah.
No, no, no. I guess, maybe I'm not clarifying. Many, many years ago, there was a plan for the future expansion.
Okay. That is not what we're talking about now. There was a subsequent plan that was drawn up, and that's what we're, that's what D P W is gonna execute on.
But was that base, I guess, was this current plan based on this older?
I have no idea. And we can ask that question when they come, when they come.
Yeah, well, that's, maybe that's something-
Is there anything else that, when Sue makes an invitation to the cemetery trustees, are there any other issues that you might want the, the trustees to talk about other than the West Lawn expansion and other than getting their, um, blessing on that other property?
The only thing I will say, I mean, I, I don't think this goes to the trustees, but just a comment in general, that when you do, if, if, if everything does come to fruition, and we do, do use the Parsons property piece there for a field, and we start talking about equipment, et cetera, it's gonna be a lot more than just moving some dirt and soil. I mean, honestly, once you take a knoll out and you remove the grass or field or whatever it is, I mean, you're going to have to plant or put something down. This will not be a field that probably gets used in the fall or anything of that nature if you start excavating and moving. In other words, this will not be a short, um-
You'll take a whole season to mature.
Yeah.
Um, I think-
I don't know what you're saying. I, I mean, from-
I'm trying to-
I understand where you're at. I'm just wanna, I'm not only just planting the seed, is that, uh, enough for punch?
Yeah.
That if, if this does come, and it don't, I mean, you can't, you won't be, don't expect that we'd be able to use-
No, I think that's recognition of that. I'm, I'm just trying to, I think you're at step six, and I'm trying to get to step one through five over the next month or two.
Well, the reason I'm bringing that is that if there, if there is, as we go through this, it might be, it might be more feasible to go someplace else also.
I think-
Just a thought. That's all I'm going on there.
The conversation that came up at the rec, at the Park and Rec meeting was they would like to get the blessing from- The conversation that came up at the Rec, at the Park and Rec meeting was, they would like to get the blessing from the trustees. And, and then ultimately make it under Parks and Rec auspices, that piece of property. That they would also like permission from us to mow and to cut that field, so that, so they can see what you've got. Because right now, it's very, it was very high type grass. And do, you know, whatever, have, you know, Megan or one of the engine, Alex, just give us, you know, we're trying to lay out, what would it look like? I don't think they're trying to do anything special at this point, because they don't need, they're not looking for a totally, you know, perfectly crowned soccer field. Or they're just looking for a place where, you know, you can just run around that's somewhat flat, you know? And then they'll work on, on other things later, because we, I don't, we don't, they don't wanna lose track of the fact that we're talking about the property that the, the sand pit. And the Barnard property that we're gonna be looking to develop as well. And they recognize that there's no sense in putting all these efforts into making this a venue. When our true attention needs to lie on that other piece of property. But they want just something that's gonna be a stopgap measure, where, where kids can practice soccer or lacrosse or football or whatever. In the time being, and not put a whole lot of money or energy into it. Is it, we, we good in terms of what their vision was? Okay.
I wanna conclude that having this meeting mid-March, or, you know, thereabout, is, would also beneficial. Because if this board decides to endorse the concept of an article the following March. Then the board that's constituted here in March would be the ones that are placing the warrant, articles on the warrant.
Okay.
And it's, you know, be appropriate that time to look far ahead to do that.
Just for timeline, next meeting, you have public hearings on fees and accepting grants. The following meeting, you have your, the fourteenth, you have the state reps. So it would be the twenty first.
Yeah, twenty first is fine. Alright, um, next is EDC, you were that one, right?
Yes.
No, I wasn't.
Okay, EDC, um, it was a three top, three topless conversation. Once, once the tax relief incentive RSA seventy-nine E, we spoke about that, they'll be talking about that at the Goffstown Business Expo. They did film some for GTV to, to explain it, and there's also talk about regarding, you know, how, how much material, or what they would like to put out further. Before, prior to the vote. The other piece that came up was, they talked about the, the expo, which is March nineteenth, and it's nice to see the, the, the light boards around the town explain that it's there. They'll be setting up a booth there, and as far as, you know, for people to come in, so they can, at the EDC booth, a couple of things will happen there. One, they'll talk about seventy-nine E, they'll talk about the, the website, and also they're gonna try and build up on their distribution list. As how they communicate, communicate in contact with, and stay in contact with local businesses. The other piece that was, that spoke, that got a lot of conversation was the membership. The board used to be fourteen, then it was nine, and sometimes they're lucky to get a quorum of five. And so, conversation regarding that piece was going out, contacting those members who are, and I'll, I'll say the word absentee members. In other words, how serious are you as a member? Where does EDC wanna go? And, and how, and how bringing in new members will, will, will create life back within EDC? In fact, one gentleman was there, and I believe his name, was that Brian?
Brian Hanson.
Brian Hanson, and he was there, and obviously, he's an entrepreneur, a local businessman, and he was just trying to bring some thought, and some, some, some thought, some vision regarding EDC. And, and here, there's someone that would be an asset as a member to EDC, but yet, we have people who don't show up as memberships. And how do we, how are we gonna start working around that? In other words, EDC needs to probably take on, has to redefine its role, is what it's doing, and, and I think that's where those conversations are going.
I'm gonna go a step further. Right now, our board provides three-year appointments. And I think that we have to think long and hard about three-year appointments on some of these folks. Because once they're appointed, unless they resign, they're yours for, for a while, so. And that's not just this, that's not just that board, it's, it's other board. Now, we're very fortunate, because we have other committees which we appoint to, where we have very dedicated people. They go to the meetings, they contribute tremendously. But EDC, it seems like it's a revolving door, I don't know. I, I, it's kind of, there's been a few, like three or four people that are like regularly there. But then the others, it just doesn't seem like it's. And maybe, maybe we gotta think about, if you're new, then, okay, it's different when you have someone, like I just, you know, you think of like a Jim Raymond. Nineteen years, you know, served the community. If you're brand new, then why are we appointing someone for three years? Why don't we appoint you for one year, let's see what you've got, you know?
Sometimes people start as alternates.
Right, well, then you can do that, but in some cases, if, if, you know, we have to, we shouldn't be giving thought to saying, if you're someone who's brand new. And we have an opening, then maybe we, and there, and there is, there's no need for alternates, shall we say, we need to fill the, fill the spot. Then maybe it's a one-year appointment.
What I can do is pull out the ordinance, cause this committee was set by ordinance. And committee membership is stated there, if you wanna change the ordinance, then we can go forward with that.
Do we, remember a while back, though, we had some discussion, I thought we did make a change on.
We did, the membership.
The membership went from fourteen to nine.
Right, because that was the whole issue of the quorum. We couldn't, we couldn't get a, a quorum.
And even now, at the, at the nine, you know, it means you need five, and sometimes, you know, we were waiting on last, on that last meeting, we were waiting for number five to come in.
One of the things might be is to allow alternates, cause I don't think we have alternates on.
I think we do.
I don't know, we'll need to check.
But, but, you know, and I, I understand the alternate piece, but the, the, the real piece here is that if you're going to have a group of nine, is that you have nine active members. In other words, I understand an alternate for that, that if someone, something happens and they step out, but not when you, when you have nine members. And I haven't seen some of them for a while, that's all I'll say. I mean, you have to start looking at saying, well, why, you know, one, you have to say, one, we need some active members, and two, why is there inactivity? In other words, I think some of that, I think there's also some purpose within EDC that they have to look at, what are we trying to accomplish? And that's one of the conversations I was trying to bring forth in the last meeting, is that as we, you know, as we come into this next year, we're gonna have to sit down. What are the goals, what are the objectives? And, and part of that, people will, you know, and, and when you bring those, bring those, the people who are on the board, and you bring those ideas out. You can have buy-in, and people become active within it. In other words, if you feel the group is going to accomplish and work towards something, you'll have, I think you'll have better attendance with that.
Anything else?
Yeah, but sometimes you, alternates can participate, the only thing alternates can't do is, is, is a vote. Unless they are assigned, because they're filling in for an absent, regular member. But as far as participating in a meeting, as far as going out and working on projects with them. Otherwise, they're, they're exactly the same as, as a full member.
No, no, I agree with that, but I mean, I'd like to, we have to get past five people, is what I'm saying.
Yeah. Alright, HDC, Historic District Commission.
Yep, HDC did meet last week, and went through quite a bit of, uh, uh, things. Paperwork, I, I assume that Town Administrator received some regarding public hearing notices.
Yes, that's scheduled, it was advertised in today's paper, and it's scheduled for next Monday night.
Right, it's basically acceptance for the old chip grant for fifty-four thousand dollars, for work to be, upcoming work on the Grassman Town Hall. The RFP was sent out in January, responses were received and reviewed by the subcommittee. And recommendations on awarding to three of the contractors were made. They were basically, there was a few things that Brian needed to follow up on, and to conclude, as far as that's concerned.
So those will come back to us?
I think what, you're going to have those recommendations after the public hearing, cause you need to accept the grant first. For you, uh, award.
Correct, correct. Also, you know, there was the usual discussion regarding that, where the two-fiftieth was, you know, bringing us update on that, and the John Stark scenic byway.
Okay. Conservation, I believe, is Nick, so we can't report out on that. Planning Board?
Yep, Planning Board did meet last week, and we had the project that you mentioned earlier, that a butts library there on High Street. They were scheduled for a, a, a hearing, and they had a request for an extension, which was granted. Planning Board did discuss some of the Briar Woods subdivision. There was an explanation about the stewardship versus rather than management by the PLC, explained to them on that. And they did, they did decide, you know, they, for a compliance hearing on Black Briar, which will probably. They were looking not to have a meeting in March, a second meeting in March, but they probably will have a meeting in order to, for that compliance hearing. That's also possible, rather than, if for some reason it can't be done, then it would be the first meeting in April, which would be. Because their, their requirement was on or before that date in April.
Okay, so, is it your opinion that it, that what we have negotiated, the, is going to, it was, met with approval of the Planning Board? And PLC, and everyone is comfortable with what, what we've done in terms of carving out a parking section?
Well, PLC was not there, Paula Bellmore was not there from PLC, there was a discussion. Uh, you know, I, I represented the position of, of the board. Which the Planning Board seemed to feel that we did what they recommended, they, they wanted, they would have liked us to do, and that, that we did. That does not mean, though, that when they have their compliance hearing, that something may not come up at that. So I think at that compliance hearing, PLC will be at, I'm pretty much sure. I did, I don't recall, I don't think I got into details of the discussion. Because details of our discussion really, you know, warrant.
Okay.
I read in record the memo.
Yeah, I did, that's right, I did read, I did read the record and, uh, the memo into the record, and I gave the secretary, recording secretary a copy. That I had, and there were a few questions, but everybody seemed to be comfortable with it at that point in time.
Alright, any questions for Phil and the planning?
And we did have, we did have a ceremony for Jim Raymond. We, I did present the proclamation, just so that everybody was aware, the chairman was gonna be there, but he had a, he had to be someplace for eight o'clock. And we were running a few minutes late, so he had to leave, so I presented Jim with the proclamation and the plaque. And then there was a little, little reception for him after that.
Alright, so thank you, Jim Raymond, for nineteen years.
Nineteen years.
With, with the Planning Board, greatly appreciated. Regarding the two-hundred and fiftieth anniversary, spent a lot of time over the last two weeks, really putting the final touches on it. There will be a schedule coming out within the next couple of weeks, it's already on our website, which is www.goffstowntwo-fiftieth.net. And really, I'll just try to give you like an overview, we've already had a, it was a Abraham Lincoln, Mary Todd Lincoln thing that was at, uh, reenactment. That was at Mountain View Middle School, that was in February. Upcoming events are the Business Expo, again, as Steve mentioned, that's March nineteenth. So if you are a business, we still are taking reservations, so just contact, you can contact Town Hall. Call Catherine, and we'll get you that information right away. The deadline for that'll be probably in another week, we need to try to get all the booths all assigned and everything. And we are also going to have a, it's an event called the Goffstown Challenge. And, and you'll be getting that in the next, in the next couple of weeks as well. And that's kind of, there's about thirty-five different events that you have to complete, that, that you have the opportunity to complete. Twenty, and if you do twenty of them, and you get your booklet stamped, you get a commemorative T-shirt, commemorating the two-hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the town. One of the events is actually one of our Board of Selectmen meetings. So if someone comes to one of our meetings, Catherine will stamp their, their passport.
Is it an official stamp that she has?
It's an official stamp, you have to guard it with your life.
Well, it's a good thing they have thirty-five options, they only need twenty, right?
I guess this is one of the thrills, they're all, everybody's gonna beat the door down and come to one of these meetings.
But there's a whole host of things, as I mentioned before, if you hike the rail trail during one of their events, you get a, you know, you get a stamp. If you, Lions Club popcorn stand is another one.
Historical society meeting.
There's, you know, we have a lot of, give a plug to, you know, King Lanes has been in business for such a long time. Going there, you get, you can get stamped there, so there's different, would it be different businesses, or just different things that have historical significance to Goffstown? Or make Goffstown special, you get stamped, and it should be a good time. And that'll last throughout the year. Then on June twenty-fifth, we're gonna have a, a gala ball. And that will be a semi-formal ball or dance at St. Anselm's College, and you'll be getting more information. You can go on Facebook, cause I created the Facebook page over the weekend. So, your wife already responded, by the way, so we know you're coming.
I wasn't not, I was not aware of that.
Yeah, she did, she said, yeah, I'm going, so.
Was she breaking a date?
Type in Goffstown two-fiftieth Gala Ball. She said she was going with someone, so.
I'm looking for.
I was assuming that was you.
It looked like a fun time.
Uh, so we'll get more information out on that, it should be a good time. And we're gonna have not only a DJ, so it's not only is it dancing, but we're gonna have an hour and a half hypnotist show. And I know I have several town officials who have already volunteered to be hypnotized, so that should be interesting. Andrew's, Andrew's laughing.
This would be a step up from plying in the face.
Correct. So it should be a really, a really good time. Obviously, this Old Home Day, which occurs in, in, in the early June. Then, we're going to be having a, a block party, a very big block party downtown here in the village. The plans are underway for that, and I'll be discussing with you, cause we're looking to close down a street or two. And we'll have to have, we'll have to be involved in that, in preparations with both police and fire. And that night will be, again, it's August twenty-seventh, which is a Saturday, and that will culminate in the evening with a fireworks display. And the event that's planned would be music throughout the day, it's an outdoor event, and there'll be live music from twelve noon to eight PM. And then it'll culminate at the end with fireworks. That will be hopefully shot over the river, so we encourage folks to come down. And then there will be a, a parade, we're gonna have a Goffstown Parade, and that will be during the Pumpkin Regatta Weekend in the afternoon. And there'll be, we would encourage all, so, clubs and organizations to sponsor a Flow Town Hall. I would assume is gonna do, do one, that would be really cool. What?
In the parade?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Why not? So we got a lot of, a lot of nice events coming up to, to celebrate the two-hundred and fiftieth. And if anyone would like to make any donations for the fireworks, you've seen some, you know, you know, tubs around town, that'd be greatly appreciated. And we are looking for, it's interesting, cause we're, when we look at donations from the citizens, we're right around like fifteen hundred dollars. And our, our fireworks display is seventy-five hundred dollars. So we do have some various clubs and organizations that will, that will obviously help to contribute. But any help that we can get from the community, a dollar or two, when you see that bucket in the store, that would go a long way.
And, and citizens should be reminded, some employers will match the citizens' contribution. So if they are so fortunate to be employed by someone like.
And if, and obviously, we're gonna be going around to different clubs and businesses. But we have some events, like I said, throughout the year, that we're looking for sponsorship. So if you're looking to get your, your company's name out there and sponsor one of these events, we'll be, either contact the Town Hall, or we'll be coming to visit you, probably. Any help we can get would be greatly appreciated, so.
Just a quick question, you said the, the email address was, once again, was what?
The website address is www.goffstowntwo-fiftieth.
Now, is there a link from?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, from, there's a link from the town's website as well.
That's what I'm trying to get at.
And that's not dot net, you said?
Dot org or?
Dot net is the, is the, is the two-fiftieth.
Yep.
Alright, I had, I, I'm doing announcements, I, I kind of, I'm sorry.
I have one more, MAC?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was at MAC, and they, we voted new officers. Our illustrious leader is Steve Fornia, not this Steve Fornia.
Really?
Chairman is Steve Fornia, he's the Town Administrator out of Hampton, and the vice.
North Hampton.
North Hampton, rather. And the Vice Chairman is Scott Meyer, the Mayor from Dover. Commissioner Campbell did come and addressed us, and gave us some information that I'm gonna leave with the board. Regarding legislative call to action, the commission report reveals crippling deficits in the highway fund that we have. Also some other information, and impacted towns, reduced. Also some other information and impacted towns, reduced funding levels. Uh, he has a map over here with all of them that reduced and the plan. And I don't think Goffstown is really impacted by any of them, just so, that's the good news on that portion, that's the, so I'll leave that here. Uh, the other thing was, uh, the board did ask me to, uh, or authorize me to negotiate on that, the covered bridge. I did speak with, um, the mayor, Scott Meyer. And my understanding just prior to that meeting was that there was an interest in Manchester for the replacement of the railroad trestle over the river, over by Pernod Street.
Kelly Falls.
Kelly Falls, yep, cause you can see it from Kelly, you can see it from Pernod Street there, uh, when you go across. Um, I did talk to him and I did mention to him that, uh, Manchester was interested. And the reason is, I bring this up with him, uh, was because Kenabunk had been in contact with the council for that. And I stressed to, uh, the mayor that, uh, this bridge would, uh, benefit two communities inside New Hampshire, both city of Manchester and Goffstown. I had to give the Manchester city plug because Dover is the city. Uh, and I said that it would be a rail trail that would be between the two. Manchester does have funding for that, for that project. My understanding from the, uh, one of our selectmen, which was, uh, David Pierce, and I believe somebody, engineer in Manchester, that the bridge will, uh, where the, where it goes on to the abutments, it will accommodate fairly closely without much work. And I said, the other thing that it does is also addresses, uh, something that was, um, a concern of the state, which was the flooding issue. And I said by that, it would eliminate the, uh, the piers that are on the current trestle, cause this was a longer span and be able to eliminate that and eliminate the debris and eliminate that, uh, the flooding for the area which was identified by the state, so. I said, you know, I can't speak from Manchester because it would have to, it would have to come from Manchester, but as far as I was concerned and my board-
It seems like it's a win-win for everybody.
I appreciate you, uh, putting a favorable word in for Manchester, should they make an effort to obtain this.
Well, I think we should-
I think they did, did they not?
Well, they, they were move, as of a week and a half ago, when I had email from officials in Manchester, they were seriously moving towards doing that.
Okay, good.
But they're gonna need, they're gonna need, uh, you know, uh, approval, uh, a request from us, but-
I think that we should send a letter to, um, to Dover, um, and or Manchester. And I mean, I have no problem authorizing the two of you to work with Sue to, to do, and to sign it.
Yeah, I think Manchester has to make the first move and then we do a letter of support.
Right.
Right, but I think it would, I don't think it, it-
Can't hurt to say-
Hurt to let Manchester know that we do support it.
Right, now, now, yeah.
It's a letter to Manchester saying we would support their bid for-
Right, and, and carbon copy Dover, let them know that we're, you know, we're totally on board with this. I mean, I think, I see this as a win-win-win, you're recycling a bridge, you're, 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 you're crossing this, uh, you know, you're, you're helping to cross this span to connect two communities on a rail trail and you're, you're alleviating flood issues, I mean-
That identified by the state.
It's huge, you know?
Win for the state.
Right. And I, I, the beauty of this is you could see that from parts of Goffstown, you know?
And it doesn't cost us a penny. Okay, um...
Other thing for public that I had was, um, staffing of the polls on March eighth. You know, Sluckman, what shifts are you taking?
Oh, I could do morning, I can, I can do morning and night, I mean, I can, I can open up and close down, you know? We're not obligated, it's not, are we obligated to be there the whole day?
Usually, yes, Sluckman is there the whole day.
Yeah, but is it necessary on a local election, like on the state, on a state election?
State is, is, but I don't know, um, I mean, I'm in and out, I, I, I don't know if I can commit, you know, to twelve, you know, to the twelve hours, but...
But on the counting?
Oh, most definitely, I think most of us do, most of us are down there for counting, yeah.
I'll be back at, uh, Penarville polling, District Five, yeah.
Okay.
Unless one of you others would like to be in the morning shift there.
Would you like me to take the morning and you'll take the afternoon?
I agree to that.
Okay.
I will be there.
All right. And then we'll get with Nick to see what he can do.
Sure.
All right. Um, one of the, I, I saw that we had a response, this is under old business, if I may go back to that. You know, this is regard to the sewer commission, it looks like they, they already had, um, instituted or initiated the meetings, I should say, with the business owners regarding the cross connections that's coming up this summer. Remember we talked about making sure that, we wanted to make sure there was a plan in, in place, that there was a communication effort with the business owners, um, and it looks like they have that well on, that they're, that's on their radar screen.
The plan was a, an internal meeting to scope out how the traffic would flow and then a, a meeting with the community and business leaders.
One of the things, um, and Sue, maybe you can kinda get with Carl on this one, but it seems as if right around this time of year, we get the, the annual DPW request for, um, summer work hours. And, um, I think, I know last year we didn't, we didn't go in that direction and last year we had all this road construction, five days a week, which was like very disruptive. Maybe it's a time for us to think about going with the way we used to do it because of the disruptions. I mean, we're gonna still have a ton of disruption in that area town, right? So then we're gonna, then we're gonna make it-
For three months.
Right, I, I guess my point is, is that would residents be more willing to deal with four days of traffic as opposed to five, I mean, five days?
Are you trying to say that as, as they're going through Penarville with that line, you're saying they're gonna go to a four day work week there?
No.
Okay, so what are we, what are you talking about, what the disruption is?
I'm talking about, we have other projects that we're gonna be doing, town projects that we're gonna be doing.
Ten hour work days.
No, I, I understand that, but, but I just, I just wanna make sure, actually, I know, I just wanna make sure we weren't-
No, I guess, I guess what I'm going at is that we, last year, we had-
I just wanna make sure we weren't making, making the idea of the disruption of the, of the, of the two.
No, no, it's called, I think what happens is, is that you, we know we have that one going on and then we know we're gonna do other projects and do we want all of that to kinda compound itself? Um, and I'm not so sure that, I mean, I was one who, I didn't vote for the, the four by ten last year. But with the, you know, with traffic issues and, I don't know, I'd, I'd rather have one less day of headache, of traffic headache, one last day of police detail, one last day of, you know?
Don't forget, Kelly Street Bridge is already started.
So I don't know, I just, this may be the year where you just, you know, I mean, I, there are pros and cons to the, to the five, you know, to the five by eight and the, and the, and the, and the four by ten and the coverage of mobile. We've had this debate forever, you know, and I voted both ways on it. I, I just, um, having what we experienced last year, um, it may be more palatable to, you know, to try to, to go with a four day week, you know? It may make sense.
Right, I, and I've had those discussions with Cal Querim and, uh, I'm anticipating he'd be here in one of our future sessions to, to bring that point up.
Okay.
About the, the road crews working for, for days.
The prior piece wasn't based upon disruption and the disruptions we had were obviously non-DPW projects, which, you know, primarily with Circle and Penarville, but what we talked about was coverage. And, and I don't know how that changes with this year's projects coming up, but that was what was based, I know that's what we, like, based the vote on last year.
Right, and from what I'm told, there always is, even when they had the four by ten, there was always coverage. So if there was any issue that came up, um, or if there was a special circumstance, they would shift, you know, their, their week around. And I also, I mean, uh, again, I don't, it's your, it's your-
And you're right on the timing.
Yeah.
I recall that you, this board's decision last year was a, a week before I became a member.
Right, so I-
It was done at this time.
The... Again, I'm, I, I just think it's something that we should, we should, we should take a look at, um, for a variety of, of different reasons.
Asking for decisions now, do you want?
No, I, I mean, I, I mean, certainly Carl can, you know, can come in. I mean, I, I think Carl has always advocated for the four by ten, you know? Um, so I don't think we're gonna hear anything differently. Um, um, I, I didn't vote for it, you know, for it last year, cause I didn't see, you know, some of the benefits, but then we didn't do it and I didn't really see that it was so great either. So I, I don't, I don't think it's great either one way or the other, to be candid with you. And as long as we're providing the service that the community, you know, expects to be done, whether it gets done in four by tens or it gets done in five by eights, then it's getting done.
The only thing I would say, if we're gonna bring up the, the conversation of DPW and coverage, I think we should also add in solid waste, because try and be a resident here that works on a Monday through fr- fr- you know, you, you, if you work Monday through, through Friday, you cannot get to the dump because it closes. By the time it closes, you cannot get, you know, you're not out of work yet. And then that just leaves Saturday, and if you happen to work on Saturday or you can't get, at least you're one day. So if we're gonna talk about coverage, I would like us to talk about coverage all encompassing, not just, not just, not just road program, but also solid waste.
I think Steve is, I think you're on to something here because, um, we, I think we need to have a, a dialogue about the transfer station and their hours, you know? Are they meeting the needs of the community? And, um, you know, one could very well argue that the Saturday is great, you know, that's, that's fantastic. But seven to three, is that what it is? Am I mistaken?
Yes, yes.
Seven to three is not customer friendly, in my opinion, you know, the, those other days.
Well, neither is the Town Hall hour.
No, 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 I, I, and we've heard, we've heard plenty, and I'm saying, we've heard plenty of criticism there as well, okay? Um, there are many people who would like one night a week for the clerk's office to be open, which I think we need to have another conversation about that, which obviously that's a Kathy discussion. But having a night, you know, where, where, especially during the summertime, where you, you know, whatever it is, uh, you know, Thursday night, it's open till seven or something, to give people to come home to, to... I don't, I don't see any harm in that, some of this stuff. So if we're gonna have adjusted summer hours for, you know, construction, then shouldn't we accommodate adjusted transfer station hours to accommodate people who are doing cleanups of their home, yard work, et cetera, so they can do that?
I think the board has to understand how those hours were arrived at from the beginning, because of every discussion that you're bringing up, the board had at the time.
And I'm fine with that, I, I guess, I think maybe we can prep Carl to say that we'd like to have a conversation with him, not only about road construction, you know, a condensed work week for, and he's made those, those pitches before. We all know him, it's just a matter of us making a decision. But what about some of these others where, you know, if it's not seven to three or Saturdays, you're out of luck, you know? And then even on the town, that, you know, it's more the town clerk, more, more so than anything, what opportunities exist where we can be open for people who, to register a car or do something, uh, one night a week?
We're very reliant on the state motor vehicle software and if they're not there, we could get stuck in the middle transaction and not be able to finish it. And they're open eight to four Monday through Friday, so that's why our hours mirror theirs.
But DPW is a different situation.
So, all right, I hope I didn't open up a can of worms on that, but, um, maybe I did. But is that something that you want, that we, that you want us, that we should be looking into? I don't want, it's not my peeve, it's just-
It should be all encompassing, cause it's known and, that's part of anything, you take a look at it and if it's working for the community. And I think a lot of people now are working longer, longer work days, they're traveling further to work and getting access is becoming an issue.
What do you think, you wanna put it on, you wanna put this for discussion or?
Yes, I do.
Phil, you're okay with?
Doesn't matter to me. I've been there, so I understand that, I know why we are where we are and I'm comfortable with where we are.
Okay, so we'll, uh, we'll have that discussion, if you can just, well, one of you can have touch base with, with Carl. And, um, I think that's it for our public session. And we have, we're going to be discussing a couple of things in non-public and of which one of them will be that Medville situation and what we're gonna, that's a legal thing, our attorney. So, but we can go under that one first and what is that, uh?
E is legal.
E is legal, right? So, um, I'd like to entertain a, a motion to go into non-public session for our, say, ninety-one A, colon, three, Roman rule two, E, legal. And for a second-
I'll make that motion seconded.
Oh, okay, I made it seconded by, by Sluckman Pierce, all those in favor?
All right.
It's unanimous, it has roll call?
Yes.
Yay, 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 we're good.